One sec.
Thank you. Good afternoon. The time is now 1:02 and a quorum of the board is present. The State Board of Education regular meeting of June 9th, 2020 is called to order. Marilyn, are there individuals who wish to address the board during today's meeting?
Yes, there are. There's one individual who is waiting in the lobby. So, Mike, if you will let the caller in, please.
Okay.
Hi, I believe this is Terry Pettit from the CAC facilitator. Is this correct, Terry?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And I think you're well aware of the rules for public comment. So if you would begin whenever you're ready, I will run the timer here. Thank you.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you. Hi, this is Terry Pettit. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes. That's correct. Good afternoon. Thank you, Marilyn.
If you have your microphone on and you are not providing public comment, if you would be kind enough to mute it, that would be great.
Okay, I'm sorry. There's another voice that was in my ear, so I'll get started here. I thank you, board, for the opportunity to speak with you today. This is Terry Pettit. I'm here representing the Special Education Advisory Committee as facilitator. I-- CAC held its last meeting in the school year last week. Dr. Kineschnuck was able to join us and thanked 14-- Ready for me?
Yes, we are.
Okay, I'll start again. Thank you. CAC held its last meeting of the school year last week, and Dr. Kineschnuck was able to join us and thanked 14 of our members for completing their three-year terms. And we really appreciated his attendance and his kind words. So, thank you, Scott. We currently still have two organizational openings and one defined member-at-large opening for next year. So, information and applications are available on our website if you on the board have any suggestions. This week's were challenging but have taught us quick lessons about continuing to meet the needs of our special education students in Michigan. I have seen teachers and therapists utilize technologies in ways that have really astounded me. I'm proud to be amongst some of the strongest educators and students I have ever known. What Michigan educators have accomplished is nothing short of amazing. The Office of Special Education is no exception. And while I know they would shy away from any kind of praise stating, well, that's what their jobs are, I've seen them really step up to face these new challenges very quickly with competence and compassion. Our CAC meetings have even been attended by out-of-state people looking to Michigan for answers to some really tough questions being experienced nationally. Last month, Terry Chapman and Dr. Kineschnuck shared with you a document created by the Office of Special Ed in April, which provided guidance for compliance with the Individuals with Disabilities Act and the Michigan Administrative Rules for Special Ed during the COVID-19 pandemic. Five weeks later, the Office of Special Ed published a revision to this document, and that just happened, updating those in the special education field to this ever-changing world. Terry and Scott have worked tirelessly to ask people what they need and pass this out to everyone, messages such as how to meet regulatory requirements, how to deal with dispute resolutions, special ed fiscal questions, and the impact this pandemic has had and continues to have on all students, not just Michigan's special education students. Data recently received by the Northwest Evaluation Association, NWEA, had demonstrated projections in which students will retain approximately 50% of the math learned, content learned prior to the public health emergency, and approximately 70% of the reading content learned prior to the public health emergency. The added impact for students with IEPs needs to be considered as districts determine the appropriate type and amount of services for individual students. At last month's meeting, board member Michelle Dack asked about compensatory education. This question is well addressed in the updated document as are questions about an extended school year. We must consider there has been a universal loss in learning for all of our students. Compensatory education is a legal remedy to which a child is entitled when a district fails to provide appropriate educational services. The purpose of compensatory ed is to place the student in a position in which he or she would have been had there been no violations of IDEA. If we look to the NWEA projections, we realize compensatory education is reactive. It is a remedy issued as a result of a district's failure to provide a free, appropriate public education, or FAP, as it's called, as determined on an individualized basis. The Office of Special Education strongly encouraged schools to be providing FAP to all of their IEP students. It looks different than it did at this time last year. The schools are providing FAP in different methods that have ever been tried before. FAP may include special education and related services provided through distance learning deemed reasonable and appropriate for a specific student in consultation with parents, which may include several types of services, virtually, online, telephonically, and through paper pencil tasks. The CAC invites our State Board of Education members to read the most recent document published by the Office of Special Education to learn how services are and may be provided as we work together through this unprecedented time, whether utilizing extended school year services, 200-day programs, writing contingency learning plans, or implementing a functional behavioral assessment during remote instruction. This document is packed with best practice and answers to the questions educators and parents are all asking. The updated guidance document is posted on the MDE COVID-19 Education Information and Resources Special Education Guidance website. And I've also provided Marilyn with a link that she can share with you and a copy of this public comment, so you'll have the link in there as well. I thank you for your time and your interest, and I wish you all a very healthy summer, and I look forward to seeing you again in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. That concludes public comment.
Thank you very much, Marilyn. Thank you, Ms. Pettit. Our next topic is the state budget and school budget/federal funding. This presentation will be done by our Deputy Superintendent for Finding for Social Security, Mr. Kyle Garant. Mr. Garant.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. Just sharing my screen here shortly. All right. Thank you, Dr. Rice, and thank you, board members, for the opportunity to present again on this topic this month. As you may remember, the May board meeting took place the same week as the May Revenue Estimating Conference last month. And so when we met last, we did not know what level or understand the level of shortfall in the state's revenue base, both in the School Aid Fund and the General Fund. Shortly after that board meeting, the Consensus Revenue Estimating Conference pegged or estimated the shortfall in the combined. So that's the General Fund and the School Aid Fund combined at $6.291 billion as a shortfall for the remainder of this year and next fiscal year. It's estimated that there's a $2.39 billion School Aid Fund revenue shortfall just in the School Aid Fund alone, and that includes the remainder of this current fiscal year and into next. As mentioned during the May board meeting, as reference, a $1 billion shortfall in the School Aid Fund equates to an approximate $685 per student cut. All else being equal, the level of cuts we're facing are the largest in a generation. Furthermore, these cuts are compounded or would be compounded by the fact that we currently underfund our school districts. Six different studies in six years all come to that same conclusion. So in essence, these cuts are off a diminished base to begin with. As Dr. Rice mentioned this morning, there has been and continues to be an urgent need to communicate the severe impact this level of cuts would have on our students and advocate with our state legislature and the Michigan Congressional Delegation to preserve educational services. Last month, during your May meeting, board, you passed a resolution regarding funding to preserve education services for children. From there, there's been a multitude of both advocacy within the department, outside of the department, and by Governor Whitmer on this issue. The governors come out very strongly in support of federal intervention as well as stating that education is one of our top priorities during the current budget negotiations and into fiscal year '21. Dr. Rice penned an op-ed in Bridge Magazine that was, again, repicked up this morning, actually, by the Traverse City Record Eagle around school funding and the pressures and the impacts that this level of cut would equate to for the current year and in the next school year. Dr. Rice also had a June 4th press conference last week, the first one since he's taken over as state superintendent, to, again, communicate directly around the impacts that this level of cut could have, what that would mean. And I think one thing that we need to consider, too, and one thing we've talked about, both with local superintendents and in the department, is as we look at the revenue shortfall, we have to also understand that school districts are going to be asked this summer and this fall to educate children through a multitude of methods. And whether it's strictly online, back in the classroom, or some hybrid thereof, the need to provide instruction in different methodologies is going to be ever-present. And we're going to be asking those districts in our schools and our students to learn with less resources. And we don't think that is a recipe for success. Dr. Rice also mentioned this morning that a PK-12 education alliance was formed, Our Children, Our Future, which includes all the major education associations. They held a virtual rally a week and a half ago to, again, advocate and educate folks on the level of impact and the dire straits that school districts are facing when it comes to potential cuts for the remainder of this year and next school year. So on the horizon, next step. School districts, as you know, must adopt a budget by June 30th. There's been a multitude of reports over the last week and a half or two weeks in media and in print around superintendents and boards starting to struggle and have these conversations around cuts. You know, the uncertainty of the level of cut that could happen for the remainder of this school year and in the next only exacerbates those conversations and doesn't allow districts to effectively begin to plan, again, for the summer as a lot of districts are looking to bolster or improve or increase their summer offerings to students, given the pandemic and into the fall, obviously. Legislative action is needed to balance the current budget for the remainder of this fiscal year, which ends September 30th. Senate Bill 690 is believed to be the vehicle bill that will be used in order to address those cuts, both any cuts to state agencies and state government as well as school aid and other funding streams. And until that action is taken, any real conversation or discussion around fiscal year '21 budget and its development are really at a standstill until it's understood what level or what the numbers are for the fiscal year '20 budget. So, right now, all the focus and attention is on the supplemental to balance the current year's budget that ends September 30th. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Rice and happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Garant. Board members, questions or comments? Questions or comments regarding school funding, school revenue, the upcoming state budget, school budgets? Recall that the local school budgets are required by law to be put into place, at least preliminarily, June 30th. That is to say, every one of our local school districts has a requirement by law to have a budget in place before the new fiscal year begins. Additionally, note that the state has a requirement to have a budget on or before October, rather, before October 1st. So there is a disjunction over a period of years. The state moved up its budget passage. I think that was the hope and intention. For this year, the pandemic has certainly changed that. Reflections of board members? Dr. Pritchett. Dr. Pritchett, then Dr. Albridge.
Thank you. Two things, two questions. First of all, I assume there is no more status on the conflict with the feds related to the CARES money and private schools. That's my first. My second is, Kyle, if there was going to be a proration for the June state aid payment, school districts would have, by law, already had been notified of that, is my understanding correct? That's not to say there couldn't be a proration for July because those state aid payments are somewhere still around the 20th, I believe. Is that correct? Or am I messing that up somewhere, that timing? So, two things.
I will address the state aid payment specifically first, Dr. Pritchett. Yes, you are correct. Given where the supplemental, the negotiational supplemental are in our normal payment process to districts for school aid, the June payment is pretty much, is not pretty much, it is off limits at this point. There's a, I think what many people believe, even though you are correct, the June payment will go off, go out around the 20th. There's a lot of work that goes into setting up those electronic files and having the payments ready to process on the 20th and start hitting district bank accounts. And so, you know, that work is pretty much done at this point for the payment, for the June payment. And any negative supplemental at this point would hit until the July payment.
Thank you.
So, Dr. Pritchett, to your first question regarding equitable services. You know that the U.S. Secretary put out guidance on the distribution of ESER funds. And I should back up so that people can follow this conversation. For many decades, non-public schools have had the ability to have so-called equitable services provided by public schools for Title I Part A dollars. And there's a formula associated with that. It's well-established. When the CARES Act was put out, it included the ESER fund, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund. That ESER fund, $390 million, $350 million, or 90% of which much be distributed by the Title I Part A formula, that ESER fund includes an equitable services provision, again, for non-publics. And many of us believe, we in the department believe, that it is pretty clear that that distribution is to be done in the same manner as the distribution of equitable services for Title I Part A funds. In fact, that language, "in the same manner," appears in the CARES Act under the ESER fund provision. Notwithstanding that language, the U.S. Secretary of Education put out guidance on April 30th that suggests a different distributional formula for those ESER funds, not based on Title I Part A, even though we believe that that's the clear language of the Act. My professional organization, as you know, the Council for Chief State School Officers, wrote the U.S. Secretary, on our behalf on May 5th, took strong exception with the interpretation in the U.S. Secretary's April 30th guidance. I shared my concern verbally with the U.S. Secretary on May 21st. On May 22nd, the U.S. Secretary responded to the CCSSO communication and indicated that she, the U.S. Secretary, did not agree with CCSSO's would-be interpretation. We had, Mr. Garant and I, had a meeting with two of the U.S. Secretary's top people, including an Assistant Secretary of Education, last week. And they communicated largely the same thing to us, indicated, as the Secretary had done in her letter to CCSSO, that she was going to be issuing a rule. There would be a federal comment period associated with that federal rule, and that we would have the ability during that comment period to share our concerns about her interpretation. We most assuredly will be sharing our thoughts on the rule, as will many others. At the same time, we've shared our concerns with members of Congress that this is not consistent with the law that they passed. So we're pursuing this in two ways, directly with the department and then through Congress and, by extension, with and through our professional organizations. That is essentially where we are. We would expect that the rule would get put out shortly, and we'll pursue that path. But at some point, if we're not able to address this issue through the rule-making process or through the intervention of Congress relative to the act that it, Congress, approved, we may have to avail ourselves of legal remedies for this. The fact of the matter is, is that in any time, it would be unacceptable to set aside Congress's explicit intent with respect to the distribution of funds. But it's particularly unacceptable in the midst of a pandemic and the possible raining down of cuts on our local public school children. So that's the update. I suppose, from your vantage point, Dr. Pritchett, it's not an enormous update, since you're pretty well-versed in this area. And I think the board likewise is, because I've been keeping the board apprised of it. But it may be some measure of update for our citizenry. Dr. Albridge.
Actually, I think my questions have been answered, but I appreciate you giving the update on the CARES funding. And I'll just share that I think it's unfortunate that our schools may have to set aside funds in an ESER account based on the fact that the Secretary of Education has wildly misinterpreted what was actually really clear language. So, kudos to you and CCSSO for trying to clarify that with her. She did send a letter back to, in response to the letter that CCSSO sent. And I read that letter, and I have to say, I was frankly disappointed to see the tone and frankly disrespect of educators that was expressed in that letter. And so commend all of you for dealing with that in a very professional manner when you were not given that same courtesy.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Other board members? We're a smaller group today than we normally are. Anything more from Mr. Garant? Anything more on dollars? We've talked a lot about cents. Now we're talking about dollars, going once, twice. Mr. Garant, thank you very much. Board, we are going to now pivot back, if we could, to the conclusion of our strategic ed plan conversation from this morning. We had the opportunity to talk about guiding principles, draft-guiding principles. We had the opportunity to talk about draft goals. What I'd like now, if you would please, are your reflections for us about the metrics. One about the value in general of metrics, because, of course, we have a strategic education plan currently that doesn't have them and have advocated for the inclusion of them in our next iteration, in our updating of the strategic education plan. But then, any specifics that you care to share on the metrics? President Albridge.
Thank you.
I think you're on mute.
I am usually not the one to make that mistake, but every once in a while, it happens. So I was just going to say that I appreciate all of the work that's going into this, and thank you for continuing to bring it before the State Board. And I think there's a lot of good stuff here. I had, as we were going through the metrics, I wrote down three notes, and so I can just share those, and then we can move forward as you like. The first one was about literacy. And I always have a negative reaction when I see that the only metric is based on standardized tests. And this one seems to follow that criteria. So I'm just wondering if there aren't other things that we can look at to measure literacy? For example, we have this third-grade reading law now, which, you know, students, some students are going to be held back as a result of that. Many of them who would have been held back by a standardized test, there are alternative methods in which they can still move forward. And so is that, at least it takes into other considerations. So is that perhaps a metric that could be utilized as well to demonstrate that the test itself is not the be-all, end-all of whether or not a student is successful in literacy? So that's item number one. Item number two is under health and safety. And I'm just curious, there was a lot of data there, and I'm assuming all of it must be self-reported, because I don't know how else you would determine how often a student has used drugs or alcohol in the last X number of weeks and things like that. I can say I do remember taking a survey like that when I was in school, and we lied. So, I'm not sure just how good that data really could be. Or is there, am I missing something? Is there another mechanism in which to get that data? And then the last thing I was going to say is, under early-middle college, it seems to be that we're only tracking those who have successfully completed the fifth year. And having worked at an institution with the largest early college in the state of Michigan, I can tell you, a lot of those students end up not staying for the fifth year. They're still wildly successful, though. And so I would hate to miss capturing the success of those students because we're only looking at the ones that complete the entire program. So those are my thoughts, and I'll leave it at that.
Okay. So you ask the questions, 1, 2, 3. I'll respond, 3, 2, 1. With respect to early-middle college, we're happy to look at those who participate as well as those who complete. We do that with respect to CTE. It would be consistent to do it with respect to early-middle college. With respect to the metrics, on the draft metrics, with respect to health, safety, and wellness, we were encouraged in early conversations with Ms. Tilly, Dr. Pew, around MiFi and MiFi data. It is true that it is imperfect data. I might add, I don't know too many data that are perfect. And certainly, self-reporting data have challenges. But I also don't know how to get to particular phenomena without self-report. That's not to say that we necessarily have to use particular metrics. But to use particular metrics, for example, the percent of young people who felt sad and unhappy over the last short period of time, the percent that had suicidal ideations. You know, if we want to track that sort of thing, it's going to have to be done self-reported. We don't have to track them. But I do think if we are, we're going to have to rely on, to some measure, the imperfection of self-report data. And then with respect to literacy, we are happy to-- we are happy to reflect on literacy in myriad ways. We did our best not to come forward with one metric for you, but rather with three metrics, knowing that, to a member, the State Board is not enormously enamored of these test data. So, we respect that. What we wanted to do was to triangulate, so not to use one set of literacy measurements, but in this particular case, to use three. And not only to use the national metric, not only to use the state metric, but also to use a benchmark assessment, whatever benchmark assessment our local school districts choose to use to help them discern whether there's been progress during the school year. But we are happy to consider other metrics. Yes, no question.
That's great. Let me just clarify for the self-reported metrics, and, you know, it's been a while since I've been in high school, so maybe this has changed. But what it came down to, and I think the reason that you can't trust the metrics, and the reason that I know a lot of people that I went to school with were not necessarily honest with that, is because they didn't trust the people who were collecting the data. So, I don't know if there's a way to, perhaps that has been addressed at this point, but I think young people are going to naturally have a suspicion of someone who plops a survey down in front of them and says, "Hey, do you drink? Do you take drugs? Are you happy? Are you suicidal?" I think that that's part of the issue, and like I said, maybe that's been addressed at this point, which would be fantastic, but I still think there's a lot of trust issues there.
Okay. Thank you. We have Dr. Pritchett, Dr. Pugh, in that order.
Thank you. Dr. Albrecht really summarized pretty much what my concerns were, but I'll dig just a little bit deeper on the NAPD data. The NAEP data has always been concerning to me, unless it is changed. When I was a superintendent a few years ago, I, one of our schools was asked to administer the NAEP, which they did. It was for one grade level. It happened to have been at our smallest elementary school, so the sample size was not very large at all. It was one grade level. We never saw the results. Obviously, we never saw the assessment, except for the students seeing the assessment. I just am, every time I see NAEP results, I cringe, because I know, and it's randomized, not everybody takes it. So, but as long as we're willing to look at other ways of analyzing and assessing whether students are being able to read, comprehend, have the appropriate fluency, et cetera, then I'm fine with that. I just, you know, wanted to be able to say that NAEP has always been somewhat a red flag to me, whenever I see those results.
Fair enough. It is the only metric that we have that permits us to do a national ranking, and it's the only metric that's permitted us to share that, for example, we've gone from 41st in fourth-grade reading in 2015, to tied for 35th in 2017, to 32nd in 2019. Gone from 31st to 30th to 28th in eighth-grade reading, from 2015 to 2017 to 2019. So, as you know, one of the things that has stuck in my craw, and I'm not a big promoter of NAEP, Lord knows, never have been, never will be, but I am a promoter of people having a rough sense of where we are as a state, and NAEP is the only pushback against the nonsense that we are somehow substantially lower than we actually are. We're sitting in the middle-third of results in the country. Some would have said, some did say, that we were markedly lower than that. NAEP is the only way to push back against that and say, "Not the case. We're sitting 32nd in fourth grade, 28th in eighth grade." And again, would that we had better tools. I don't know better tools for the national comparison, and I do think that the national comparison helps us for a host of reasons, not the least of which is, when we take big cuts across the country in public funding, it's conceivable that raw results in reading might decline, but relative results, that is to say, results relative to other states, might in fact increase. And I think we need to be able to show that. There's not a perfect metric. Happy to include lots of metrics to triangulate around where we are. Looking forward to more conversation with the Board about what those metrics might be. Dr. Pugh? Dr. Pugh, you are doing a Marcel Marceau imitation. There you go.
I mean, I was over here spitting a lot of knowledge, too. So, I have to say, I agree with my other Board members on the indicators, that some of the questions with the indicators that have been raised, especially as it relates to standardized tests. So, I'll just really like focus, as it relates to indicators, more so on the health indicators. I would really love to see more around the physical health indicators. So, I mean, I don't know if there's anything that we could, if there's any way that we could report asthma levels or reasons for absenteeism. I know that that's already been a difficult database or information to extract as it relates to reasons for absenteeism, and we know that asthma has been noted as one of the leading causes, if not the leading cause of absenteeism. We know that if kids aren't there, they're not learning. So, I would really hope to see if we could extract some of that, and any other physical health. If there's any way that you can look at lead levels, blood lead levels, things that impact the neurological system and behavior and disrupt achievement in that way. Then, there's this issue of race, since that is the theme of the day. You know, there, I don't know if on the MiFi data, there, I don't think that there is a specific question yet, as it relates to race, racism. But if, you know, we asked about bullying, but if there, racism has been experienced, we know that racism impacts the physiological system of people. It dysregulates the cortisol levels. It is an immune suppressor or suppressant. It suppresses the immune system, and so there is direct correlation, not only of that child experiencing it, but we've also seen research and data where if a mom experiences stress, which can be due to racism, that it can also impact that child while, before the child is even born. So, I would love to be able to push the envelope on some of those more innovative thinking as it relates to that. We do know that when the cortisol level is dysregulated, we can see fatigue. There are other things that we might, a weight loss. So, I don't know if there's any way that we can even look at some of that data as well. So, then, when we look at the data overall, and this was a conversation that we had some months ago, is there any way that we can move from just looking at descriptive statistics to looking at inferential statistics? So, then, we're running correlations, or we're running regression, where we're not just looking at this percent, I mean, this child, we're seeing this group of children have this percentage of academic issues. You know, black children have this percentage of lows or scores that are lower than, you know, than the median. But are we able to actually do more robust statistics that we're able to, that we use, statisticians use, to get us closer to determining what are predictors of achievement, what's protective, what are the protective factors, and what are those factors that hinder achievement growth, all of the above? And then, that moves us from just looking at blaming a school, blaming a child. But, you know, we might be able to look at confounders and look at what are the drivers of outcomes. But if, because if we're going to keep having these conversations, then that is the way that we should move, and we might not have that internally, but is there a way that we can partner so that we can start looking at the data in a way that we can really extract and better draw conclusions from that data?
So, I heard a couple of things. One, I heard the interest in being able to disaggregate particular data, to drill down. Two, I heard the interest, or 1A, 1B, an interest in disaggregating by ethnicity or race. And we will explore what's available in terms of disaggregated data, either with MiFi or with anything, or with anything else. But the other thing that I heard was an interest in going beyond the descriptive, to see what we're able to do, to actually use a descriptive to drive outcomes. And of course, that's broadly the goal of all of this data, to use it to help us set policy, set programs, and improve worlds for children. We will dig into MiFi additionally. If you know of other data sets, particularly on the physical health side, about which we should be aware that we need to explore, if you would be kind enough to share those with us, we would be happy to explore those. We want to peel this back as much as possible, recognizing that this area, this broad category of health, safety, and wellness, is probably the broadest of the eight-goal areas. In fact, it is the broadest of the eight-goal areas, and it lends itself to a lot of interpretation, and it is up to the Board to flesh out what that means. But if I could, Board, you can flesh it out to mean what you'd like it to mean. I would appreciate, though, if there are some metrics to the broad concepts, because, again, I don't want to get caught up in soaring language, on the one hand, and not have a way to measure progress, on the other. I'm about changing outcomes for children, as I know you are, and we can't change outcomes for kids unless we measure. So, that's not to say that we are solely confined to existing measurements. It is to say, for the moment, we are, and if we want to work with a group or groups to embellish the measurements that are available, let's do that. But let's not forget the fact that, at the end of the day, we've got to take the language, whatever language we create around our goal, and be able to operationalize it, I think anyway, with metrics, just so that we're able to help drive a better, to help drive a better world. So, Dr. Albrecht, then, Mr. McMillan? No? Okay. Mr. McMillan?
No. I'm done. I'm good.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. McMillan?
Yeah. When I first got on the Board, I did talk about metrics with the top 10 and 10, and how we would know if we're going to arrive or not. So, I appreciate the discussion. As I mentioned, I agree with Dr. Albrecht regarding standardized tests. I've mentioned that before the lunch, and I certainly am concerned about unintended consequences, and that, you know, I don't think they're the be-all, end-all. I have always, and I just will throw this in, I've always advocated for third-party anonymous surveys as metrics. I think, you know, a lot of these metrics, it's just hard to say, you know, which, I mean, some can be important, some can have unintended consequences. I personally want to know if parents are satisfied, if teachers are satisfied, and in general, taxpayers are satisfied. So, I, that's where I would tend to want to gravitate towards and say that those, I would feel those are important, but anyway.
Right. So, just a question about, two questions. One, with respect to satisfaction of parents, students, taxpayers, your thoughts on a couple of things? One, what goal that would attach to? Two, your thoughts on whether or not that data, those data are available currently? I know we sometimes see it in survey data from pollsters, for example, an Epic MRA survey, for example. It's not overly comprehensive. That is to say, they don't survey tens of thousands of individuals. That would be cost prohibitive, but they do do some measure of survey. The other question I'd ask you is, do you believe that the presence of choice, whether you believe in choice in its current form or forms in the state or not, do you believe that the presence of choice tends to increase parent satisfaction with their current, the current schooling of their children, given the fact that if they're not satisfied, they can go somewhere else?
I'm not sure about that last one. Let's see. Oh, what, satisfied about what? I mean, just the education. I think a parent, you know, maybe is more interested in safety as opposed to, you know, the latest standardized test or something. They're maybe interested in, there's just, I don't know. I mean, I think that, I think that we could, we should be focused on satisfying parents and teachers, students, taxpayers. There's, I don't know that there'd be funding. I think that if you went to the legislature, they may support it. You wouldn't obviously have to survey everybody, so I mean, you could just take a sample. You know, I know surveys only, I mean, can cause, you know, you do a survey for governor's race. I know it's maybe $10,000 or $15,000, but it might, you might want it to be more extensive than that, but I don't know that you'd have to spend hundreds of thousands. I think you could get, you could do it, you know, with a very reasonable amount of money.
Would you see this as being part of the Strategic Education Plan, or separate and distinct from?
Well, I mean, again, I feel that with public education, public education dollars, you know, all these metrics may point one direction, but if parents and teachers and taxpayers are satisfied, you know, I'm not sure how much I really care about a lot of the, I mean, you know, some of the other metrics may, I mean, I'll care about them, but they may not be as elevated. So, and I know that surveys can be a little bit misleading. You can have 80%, but those other 20% maybe have really bad experiences that shouldn't be swept under the rug. So, but I just, I feel that those would be important metrics. They wouldn't, if you were going to do 20 metrics or 15, I'd love to throw a couple of those in, and I think that they'd be important.
Okay. Let us reflect on that. I need to think about whether that belongs at the state level or belongs at the local school district level, as district by district, they reflect on where their parents, their children, their taxpayers are. That's where the rubber hits the road in so many ways. That's where the provision of education takes place. I do think surveying is helpful. I know a number of local school districts that survey their parents and citizenry in a host of different ways, including going to the polls for millages. Those are, those are surveys of sorts as well, and I think important ones. I would like to say this, while it is true that many people are uncomfortable with testing, and particularly with so-called standardized testing, people are also uncomfortable with children not being able to read. They're uncomfortable with children not graduating from high school, with coming out of high school without a direction. So, I'm just hopeful that, while we don't necessarily have to So I'm, I'm just hopeful that while we don't necessarily have to love all of our metrics, or even any of the metrics particularly, that we appreciate the value of collecting the data, if only to help us serve children in some way, moving, moving forward. Other board member thoughts or comments? Thoughts, comments? Ms. Tilly? I'm going to call on you without you raising your virtual hand. Going once, Ms. Tilly? Twice, thrice? Okay. Other board members? Dr. Pugh, do you have another?
Just, you know, just to just drive home what I was saying about what we do with the data and how we actually analyze that data can, can, can mean a whole lot. I mean, looking at descriptive statistics really doesn't tell us a whole lot. I mean, it, it gets us there, makes us want to dig deeper, but you know, I think if we really want to start talking about, you know, what, what a test score means, with all the noise of everything else that's going on, then, then we have to definitely begin moving far beyond descriptive statistics.
Fair enough. I agree. There's no question but that, but that descriptive statistics by themselves are not going to take us very far. They serve as prelude for action, not action by themselves.
And get people and children wrongly mislabeled. So I'll just add that.
Yes. No, there's no doubt. But remember, we are not talking about data in any but the most aggregated forms at the state level. So we're not talking about what Michael Rice, or Pamela Pugh, or Tom McMillan, or Judy Pritchett gets on his or her tests, but rather how we're doing as a state, how we're doing in particular groups, economically disadvantaged versus non, African-American students, white students, Asian-American students, Latino students, students with disabilities, students without, English language learners, non-English language learners, migrant, non-migrant, homeless, non-homeless. So it's an effort to gauge the extent to which we're getting different outcomes, and then exploring how we might narrow the gaps for particular groups. So I agree with you. It is not action by itself. It serves as analytic prelude to that action. Yeah. Other, other reflections? Other reflections at 1:55? Okay. Hearing and seeing none. Thank you, board, for, for that discussion. Thank you, Ms. Alice and Ms. Carter, for your presentation earlier today. We are now going to pivot to an update from the Office of Partnership Districts. Dr. Bill Pearson, Director of the Office of Partnership Districts, and Ms. Gloria Chapman, Assistant Director of the Office of Partnership Districts, share information on review of goal achievement, RGA, structured conferences that occurred virtually this spring. There will be a PowerPoint presentation. Dr. Pearson, Ms. Chapman, welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Rice. We have some slides to provide to the board with regard to an update on what the Office of Partnership Districts has been doing with their review of goal attainment. Just a reminder that the partnership model began in 2017, and each partnership district agreement is for three years. And currently, we have 29 districts and 103 schools in Rounds 1, 2, and 3. So the review of goal attainment agenda looks like this. The large portion of the agenda is the district presentation. Usually, they provide a presentation on their benchmarks and what they have been accomplishing. They present for about two hours. Then we determine if the, each benchmark is met or not met, and the district provides an assessment. MDE provides an assessment, and then a partner that works with the district provides assessment. Then we come to a determination consensus, and then we come to a summary of, is the district on track or off track with regard to their review of goal attainment? Then we talk about promising practices that we heard, and everybody that's involved on the, in the conversation can participate. And then we talk about recommendations that we think will help the district achieve its benchmarks and work towards achieving the 36-month goals that will be coming at the end of the three-year agreement. The Office of Partnership Districts has now completed the 18-month review of goal attainment, structured conferences for partnership districts in Rounds 2 and 3. And as you recall, we completed Round 1 last year. So there's a couple of changes to the work that we have been doing. A round two or three district that is off track because of process and local benchmarks will have another RGA in the spring of 2021. And a district is off track if they do not meet 2/3 of their process benchmarks and 2/3 of their local outcome benchmarks. Previous baseline data for local outcome benchmarks will not be used. This is a change. Instead, we will reset the baseline using each district's local assessment instrument in the fall of 2020, and assess those same students in the spring of 2021. We will, however, use the original concept in each benchmark. So for example, if a district has a benchmark that says they want to increase the proficiency of 4th and 5th grade students in math by 3%, then we will use that concept, but we're resetting the baseline for this fall in 2020. So that takes in the COVID slide that NWA talks about, because students were not in school for a third of the year and for the summer. A district determined to be off track again in the spring of 2021 will have all components of the district's partnership agreement carefully examined, and more intensive area-specific support will be provided. Each district 36-month goals will stay the same. So the following five districts were determined to be off track in their 18-month RGA because they did not meet their state benchmarks using 2019 state assessment results. Without state assessments in the spring of 2020, state benchmark cannot be reviewed for an off-track RGA. Therefore, these five districts will remain off track, but they will not have another RGA, because we cannot assess their state benchmark, because there was no state assessment this spring. So Flint, Genesee, STEM Academy, Grand Rapids Public Schools, Muskegon Public Schools, and Saginaw Preparatory Academy did not achieve their state benchmarks, but they did meet 2/3 of their process benchmarks and 2/3 of their local outcome benchmarks. The following three slides will indicate what each of the districts have done with regard to their benchmarks. So we got the district listed. The next column is the number of schools in the partnership agreement, the number of schools in the entire district, number of benchmarks attained versus the number of total benchmarks, and the 18-month status determination, on track, off track, and will there be an off-track RGA next spring. There's an asterisk at the bottom, and those are schools, for example, Flint at the bottom, they are off track, but they're not going to have an RGA, because we're not including the state benchmarks. So Flint was successful in attaining 2/3 of their process benchmarks and 2/3 of their local outcome benchmarks, but they were not successful in their state benchmarks, but we are not including the benchmark, state benchmarks. So Flint would have been 15, well, they were 15 out of 33, but we can't assess the state benchmarks. So, next slides are some other districts that we have had RGA conferences. Joy Preparatory Academy, for example, did not have state benchmarks. They are off track because of process and local outcome benchmarks, so they will have an RGA. Saginaw Preparatory Academy at the bottom, they were 7 for 7 with their process and local outcome benchmarks, even though they didn't meet their state benchmarks. But they were, they're off track, but they will not have an RGA in the spring. And other districts that we work with. And districts in Rounds 2 and 3 scheduled for a spring 2021 RGA. These districts are listed. They will be using NWA as their assessment in the fall to reset their baseline, and they will have a spring assessment from NWA next spring in 2021, and we will have another RGA working with them in May or June. And then a reminder at the bottom, Bridgeport Spalding is a district from Round 1, and they were off track with their 18-month RGA and their 24-month review of goal attainment. Thank you, and that's our update, and I will entertain any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Pearson. Board members, questions or comments for Dr. Pearson? We have a comment by Dr. Pritchett.
Thank you. Dr. Pearson, Bridgeport Spalding, were they one of the original 13 to 20 schools that were placed on the first list? That's how I'm going to term it. And they are still off track? Or were they in the second round?
They were in the Round 1, and there were eight districts in Round 1, and yes, they were off track after their 18-month and their 24-month RGA. So that will then have a evaluation of partnership agreement at the end of their fourth year, which will be the fall of 2021.
Okay. The other seven schools or districts met their goals, so that's why we're not seeing any progress on them, because they're done?
Yes. Yes. We reviewed those, and they have been displayed on slides before, but yes, I didn't go back to Round 1. I was reviewing Round 2 and 3.
That's fine. All right. I just want to make sure I did this straight in my head. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Dr. Pritchett. Other, other questions or comments by or from board members? Dr. Pugh, a question?
And this is related to Benton Harbor, of course, and I know that they don't necessarily fit here, but when can we, how can we get an update on Benton Harbor?
So I had some conversation recently to your question with Dr. Townsell. Dr. Pearson is in touch with Dr. Townsell on a regular basis. We can certainly share an update with you here, but note that, strictly speaking, not a partnership district. So if you wouldn't mind, if we could just to be clear with our listeners, if we could finish up the partnership district conversation, and then as, as that is finished, if we could then pivot to a conversation about Benton Harbor, that would be great. Anything on partnership districts as presented? Mr. McMillan?
I guess I can't, I can't say that I followed everything, because there was, initially there was about five districts on the first slide, and then I thought they were not meeting expectations, and then there was a large list that looked like about 10 or so that were off track. I guess I, just overall, those that are off track, are there any disputes? Do the districts all agree that they're off track, that they understand it, that they don't have any, yeah, that they're, that they're not disputing it or anything like that? That would be my first question. Second is, are there any that are getting close to negative consequences, and if so, what are those? So if you can answer those, I have one other one.
Yeah. The districts fully understand why they're off track or why they're on track. The system we have in place is pretty clear. When we review the business rules and make the determination, we have been very successful working with the districts and arriving at that consensus, whether you're on track or off track. What you saw earlier was there are five districts that we cannot review with another goal attainment like we're supposed to have, because there's no state assessments to review them. Now, the other five that we are going to review in the next spring, they were off track because of process and local benchmarks. So there's really 10 districts out of 29 that are considered off track in Rounds 2 and 3. And if you add Bridgeport Spalding, there's 11 out of 29 total. I know it was confusing.
So, but my initial question was, do they all, I know they understand it, do they agree with, with the assessment that they're off track, or they, do some of them feel that the metrics are, you know, are inconsistent or are not telling the full story? Do they all agree that whatever the consequences they're heading toward, that they should be heading toward potentially, if they don't? Do they all agree they're off track? You know, I mean?
Yes. They, they, they all agree they're off track. What we're finding is that there are districts that wished they would not have had state benchmarks and only had local outcome benchmarks and process benchmarks. It's a little more difficult, we're finding out, to meet the state benchmarks using the M-Step or SAT than it is to meet your benchmarks, local benchmarks, using NWA, Cadence, or I-ready. So there are some districts that have said to us, you know, we wish we didn't have the state assessments, but they did. The individual district chose what their benchmarks were going to be and chose what their 36-month goals were going to be. So as we get ready for Round 4, you know, the Office of Partnership Districts, we are working on, we probably need to review our business rules to come up with a better system and a better plan as we work with districts that'll become on track or off track in Round 4. So we're learning as we go along, and we're getting better at what we're going to do in the future. So I, to answer your question, yes, they do understand. I think there's some reservation by some of the districts I wish I would have. And now that we know more and districts know more, I think we'll do a better job in Round 4.
Okay. And then what about the consequences that they're heading toward if they don't get on track?
Well...
And how soon would that be?
Well, that would be at the end of the 36-month agreement, at the end of the, the valuation of partnership agreement, which will now be in the fall of 2021. So, you know, without assessments, everything's been pushed ahead another year. So we do have some time, you know, in between that we didn't have before for some of the districts. So in terms of where they're heading, that's something that we need to talk about and, you know, with the districts in my office. We're not sure exactly how next year will unfold. So I don't want to say that for sure this is the place where some of the districts are going or where they're heading, because we're not sure exactly how next year will unfold. So, you know, we got to be, you know, careful as we talk about it. I think we have to be consistent with districts understanding the predicament that, that they're in.
Okay. And then finally, over the last several years, I've, I think we've talked about revising metrics. I mean, no, most of us, I think all of us on the board have concerns about state metrics. So it's not only those districts that wish they, some of them may not have included state metrics, we probably would also agree with that, or at least, at least agree with it to, to a large degree. So, you know, I, you had mentioned something about metrics can't be changed, but... So, you know, I, you had mentioned something about metrics can't be changed, but, you know, if we're using metrics and they're heading for something that's bad, and we disagree with those metrics as well as they do, then maybe there should be some changing. I'm not talking about lowering the bar, I'm talking about the bar was wrong maybe initially. And so I hope we're open to that discussion over the coming year and a half leading up to the fall of 2021.
Yeah, I stated in the slide that, I didn't say the metrics couldn't be changed, I said the 36-month goals, we're not going to change it. And, and again, I understand what you're saying, and I, I still think that I'm going to stick with the statement, we need to see how next year unfolds, and then we'll move in that direction.
Okay. Thank you.
So, Dr. Pearson, a question, just, just for clarity's sake, the number of, and percentage roughly, of districts that are on track relative to goal attainment?
Two-thirds.
Right. So, so just, I mean, sometimes we get caught up in, in, in those that aren't. And I think that's really a testament to the model. And I think that there's a value to reflecting upon this moment and reflecting upon where the model came from. You know, it came from our former superintendent, Brian Wiston, may rest in peace with strong support from the State Board. And I think it's important to just reflect upon that for, for the, for the moment. I do think it's important to give credit where credit's due. And that was a moment in our state's history. It was a challenging moment. State superintendent at the time stood up, State Board did as well. This is not a perfect model, and it certainly doesn't include perfect resources to under-resourced districts. But it's a markedly better model than we had three or three and a half years ago. And I think that's to the testament, that's a testament to former State Superintendent Wiston, State Board, and certainly the Office of Partnership Districts moving forward. We were heading down a bad road, we're heading down a better road now. Can it be improved? Yes. Should it include more reasonable resources for our school districts, which are particularly challenged? Because every one of these districts is particularly challenged. There is not a high socioeconomic status district on this list, in part because those districts are pretty doggone well-resourced. And I don't mean simply at school, although that may or may not be the case. I'm talking about all the children receive outside of school, and that rolls into school to make school a, a better experience. So I simply say, I think that this model has done well. I think we can continue, to the board's credit, to improve upon it as, as board members have suggested. It certainly can be improved, as you've suggested, Dr. Pearson. But I also think it's a dramatic improvement over the road we were heading down three-plus years ago. So that, that's the only thing that I would say. And that's not to support any particular goal or any particular metric at all. I think it all ought to be on the table for reflection about how we do better by our young people in, in the, in partnership districts. Anything more from the board for Dr. Pearson? Anything more? I'm looking around to see if board members are making different gestures, perhaps bidding on the next item. I'm seeing nothing, going once, twice, and we're done. Dr. Pearson, thank you so much for your presentation. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Board, we are going to pivot. Could I have an approval of the minutes of the regular and committee of the whole meeting of May 12th, 2020?
So move.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Marilyn, if you could take a roll call vote, please?
Fecto's absent, McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Ramos Montini absent, Snyder absent, Tilly? Okay, moving on. Albridge?
Yes.
Back to Tilly?
Ms. Tilly, we need your, we need your vote.
Yeah.
You are the fifth member, you represent a quorum.
Tiffany, are you on the line?
Board members, if we could pause for a brief moment of silence.
Ms. Tilly voted yes in the chat. So that is five yeses and passes.
Thank you, Ms. Schneider. Thank you, Ms. Tilly. It's always, always good to have a moment of silence. You never know what that will bring forth. May I please have a motion to approve the minutes of the work session of May 20th, 2020?
So move.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please, Marilyn.
Fecto absent, McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Ramos Montini absent, Snyder absent, Tilly? Tilly, please. While we're awaiting that vote, Albridge?
Yes.
And we got a yes in the chat from Tiffany Tilly. So five yeses, motion passes.
Very good. Thank you very much, Marilyn, for that. Thank you, board members. Even, even votes on meeting minutes can be a challenge virtually. We're at the report of our president, Dr. Albridge.
As always, I will try to be brief. I appreciate the passionate conversation that took place today regarding the board's resolution on racism. I think this resolution is about being future-forward, and while we can't change what has happened, we can certainly impact what happens in the future. So I want to especially thank Judy for her leadership in pulling that together. Last night, I spoke at a Communities and Schools of Michigan virtual event, and during my comments, I mentioned the dichotomy of celebrating at a time when the nation is suffering. And while we certainly acknowledge the legitimate pain and anger that people have, we can also applaud the efforts of those that are working to support and serve others, and also focus on what impact we can make on the future, which, again, I think is what today's resolution does. I also talked about the importance of relationships and the need to come together as a community to care for one another and to build each other up. And I, I think no place exemplifies us like a public school. And I'll just say once again that within a week of the governor's stay-at-home order, our schools transitioned into food distribution centers and launched distance learning programs and helped families connect with resources. And so I think of all times, our public schools have proven their value. And I certainly hope that this is reflected in the budget conversations that are happening both in Lansing and in Washington, D.C. Next year is going to be an extremely challenging time for our schools without a budget crisis. You know, schools are talking about day on, day off, classes with no more than 20 students, which I think we love the idea of classes with no more than 20 students, but that also means there's a financial impact to that as well. So all of this is coming to a head, and to reiterate once again that our, our schools really need to be in a stable financial position right now so that they can serve the students starting in the fall, which certainly helps not only the students, but it helps all of us. Because being able to have kids in school means folks can go back to work and they can take care of putting food on the table for their families. And so, once again, I'll just reiterate that I, I hope that this is a major part of the budget conversations that we have. And that's it.
Thank you, President Albridge. Report of the state superintendent, I hope, will be similarly brief. What our president didn't tell you, out of humility, was that she was honored at the CIS Michigan Dinner last evening, and that her honoring was absolutely, completely logical, justifiable, reasonable, given her leadership on the State Board over the last 14 years. We appreciate her leadership as president of the State Board. You heard some of that leadership earlier today, you just heard some of it a few minutes ago. But what you don't hear with a State Board president, or oftentimes with State Board members, is that their leadership is quiet. It's leadership in individual conversations, influencing policy directions and law directions and myriad other things that improve the lives of children. And so with respect and appreciation for our State Board president, Dr. Albridge, who was honored yesterday at the CIS Michigan Dinner. A number of you have raised concerns with me, board members, community members, about school funding. And you have rightly pointed out, as Dr. Albridge did just a moment ago, the paradox in the moment. That is to say, at once, we are fighting a pandemic. At once, we have greater expenses than we would in the absence of a pandemic. And yet we are looking not simply at a trim as a cut, but as a profound hacking away at a cut. It's absolutely, positively unacceptable that children should be adversely affected in the midst of a pandemic. It's harder for them now, I might add, it's harder for educators now, it's harder for parents now. And it's unfathomable, it's unimaginable and unacceptable that they would somehow be subjected to large budget cuts. The largest budget cut in our state's history was $470 per student in 2011. The budget cut to which our children could be exposed this year could easily exceed $470 per kid. It could double that, it could triple that. And that's, that's not based on inside knowledge, that's just the straight math of it. That's not simply my reflection, it's the reflection of state legislators who get to vote on a state budget. Many of them are very concerned about where we are, the 110 House members, the 38 state senators. We need to make clear, not simply to our state legislators, but also to our Michigan congressional delegation, that children ought not to be adversely affected in the midst of a pandemic. Arguably, we need more money during this period of time. Arguably, we needed more money, given six studies in six years saying that we were underfunded. But at the barest minimum, children should not be adversely affected by profound budget cuts. They should be held harmless in the midst of a pandemic. As we battle a pandemic, as we battle the specter of large budget cuts, we also fight against a scourge of racism. George Floyd was murdered. There's no way to look at the video and to come up with any other reasonable conclusion. He was murdered. And his murder is the latest in a series of killings of blacks, and particularly of black males, in this country. It's a long and ugly part of our history. And the racism that inspired that needs to be rooted out. That racism doesn't begin in schools, and it doesn't end in schools. But schools are an important part of society, and they have a responsibility to play a very important role in rooting out or eradicating racism. Last week, I shared my reflections on George Floyd's killing with members of the media who are responsible for covering education. Day later, on Friday, I wrote to our local school superintendents, our public school academy directors, and indicated that the department would be pulling together a group of educators, a group of students, to reflect upon what we might do to improve public education in 831 local school districts, educating 1.5 million public school children across the state. I asked for volunteers to serve with us, to scrutinize not simply policy and policy guidance, present and future, but also standards, ways to embellish curricula, instructional methods, materials, and the like. How can we root out racism? We have a responsibility as the broad public institution responsible for helping raise up and educate our young people. We have a responsibility to look at ourselves and to reflect upon how we can do better. And we have a responsibility to do it not separate and distinct from local educators, but in partnership with local educators, who are responsible first and foremost for the education of our young people. We have a responsibility to provide leadership in that effort, to share guidance and resources, thoughts, reflections, and programs that might benefit our local educators, as they work directly with our young people, to root out the scourge of racism. You know, I, I have, over a period of years, sought to fill in the gaps in my education, as I know a number of you have sought to fill in the gaps in your education. Education, even if brilliant, can only be so much at a given time. But ideally, education gives you the tools to continue your education and to continue reflecting upon your world, and reflecting upon how you can have a positive impact on your world. I'm reminded of the NAACP, an outstanding organization, which was initially created in 1909 as an anti-lynching organization. Some people don't know that or aren't aware, that the genesis of the NAACP was the fight against lynching in this country. We never got an anti-lynching bill approved through Congress in this country. There are books that you can read that suggest that lynching has ended in this country. I think those of us who have seen video after video after video, now that people are regularly armed with cameras, I think we know that that's not the case, and that what might pass as legitimate for some is absolutely killing in cold blood, blood, in, for, for many, 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 many of us. It's time to eradicate racism. And public education and our public educators, who are brilliant in so many ways, can lead the way in this fight, minimally can play an enormously strong role. So I look forward to working alongside and in concert with and in partnership with our local educators to build a better world for our young people. Thank you very much. I- I apologize for only one thing. I was not similarly brief, as advertised. The report of the Michigan Teacher of the Year, Ms. Cara LaHead, the 2019-2020 Michigan Teacher of the Year, will present her report. Ms. LaHead is an English Language Arts and History teacher at Stony Creek High School in Rochester Community School. She represents the very best of the very best profession, and we appreciate her being with us today. Ms. LaHead. Ms. LaHead, are you with us?
Okay, so hi, we'll try this again. You know my Wi-Fi is terrible, so we'll see what we can do here. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. See if that'll help. All right, can everybody see? I tried to share my screen, did it work? Yes, okay. I might have to stop and start over because I can't see it, so I need to be able to see it too. Okay, here we go. So I'm just... ...with you. I'll be back in August, but I'll be with the new teacher, Michigan Teacher of the Year. So, I worked with Sheila on supporting the summer learning pandemic or not. That document came out a couple of weeks ago. And right now, I know that Dr. Rice mentioned this earlier, that we, that seven of the teachers, regional teachers of the year, are working on... We are working in the work groups, so I put their names up there so you would know who everybody is that is doing that work with me. And we meet twice a week, coming up with first the barriers and the problems, and now moving on to hopefully some solutions. Let's see if I can get this to work. Okay, here we go. And, this was exciting, our National Teacher of the Year, Tabitha Rosbroi, from Kansas, was chosen. She is the first preschool teacher ever to be chosen for the award. And she actually works in a retirement village. She has a preschool, an intergenerational preschool program, and they have daily interactions with the residents and her students, which I think is just really fascinating and wonderful. She is an amazing person, and I'm really happy for her. And then, just some other things that I've been working on, I'm going to be working with the Governor's Educator Advisory Council, not the new one, but the one that I've been on since September, until August, and then I'll be done. I wrote my blog about teacher appreciation during a pandemic, which was a little bit strange this year. And then, I'm going to be moderating or helping to moderate a chat for Ed Week later this month, and I'm working with my district, obviously, trying to figure out reentry. And then, I'm organizing resources for my colleagues on social justice and systemic racism, and really kind of changing some teaching practices. We're going to be doing a book study, we're going to do some curriculum review. Mostly, I'm doing that with my school and through my local union. So, I just have a few closing remarks to share with you. I acknowledge that mine is not the voice that needs to be heard in this moment, but the silence of white people, and particularly white teachers, is not acceptable. Teaching is, and always has been, inherently political, not partisan, as some people like to make it, but political. And teachers make decisions every day that impact our students' learning in political ways. They watch us. They see the decisions we make about the books that they read, the history we choose to present, the people, ideas, and events we present as being important, and those we choose to leave out, whether it's purposefully or not. My districts and many others, they like to say that in education, all means all. And I do believe it is every educator's responsibility to show up and stand up for all of our students. But right now, our black students need us to be better. They need us to do the work and to show up for them, because all can never mean all if the lives, experiences, and bodies of our black students don't matter. So as a white person who can never understand the experience of living as a black person in this country, I promise to continue to read and to learn. I promise to listen more than I speak, and speak when my voice is helpful, to ensure that alongside our calls for diversity and equity, we also seek justice for our students and our communities. It has been a pleasure to be your Teacher of the Year, and I'm really excited for you to meet the new one. I don't know who it is yet. And I just really appreciate your conversation this morning and the resolution that you passed. And that's all I have.
Ms. LaHead, we appreciate you, and we appreciate your amazing voice on behalf of teachers in Michigan and across the country. You are outstanding. Next item...
Thank you so much.
You bet. The next item on today's agenda is the approval of nominations to the Special Education Advisory Committee Organizational Seat Replacements. Today, the board is being asked to approve the Special Education Advisory Committee Organizational Seat Replacements. Presenters are Dr. Scott Kennick-Schneck, our deputy superintendent, who's back for The Late Show, and Ms. Terri Chapman, Director of Special Education. May I please have, Board, a motion to approve the nomination to the Special Education Advisory Committee Organizational Seat Replacements? I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion? Hearing none. If I could have a roll call vote, please.
Fecto absent, McMillan?
Yes.
Pritchett?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Ramos Montini absent, Snyder absent, Tilly? I'm seeing a yes in the chat for Tiffany Tilly. Albrecht?
Yes.
Passes with five yeses.
That was virtually easy, as votes go. Thank you very much. Dr. K, thank you, Ms. Chapman. Board members, are there any board members who wish to offer comments? Dr. Pritchett, a real hand, not a virtual one.
Yeah. Thank you. Just three things. One is, there is a saying that it takes a village to raise a child. My comment is, it also takes a village to write a resolution. So, I do appreciate all of the assistance and documents that I was able to also utilize. I appreciate the conversation this morning. I think we learned a lot about people's, not only their perceptions, but their viewpoints. I have certainly learned a lot during this process and look forward to learning even more. I want to thank Cara for her remarks. They hit home on the fact of the political versus partisan. And part of that is, I used to be a social studies teacher, which was the best job I have ever had in the world, especially with high school students. So, I appreciate those comments, Cara, so thank you very much. And my last comment is about the Partnership Office. Dr. Rice and I were there at the beginning, I believe, when the Partnership Office was first conceptualized by Bryan and started to move forward. And there have been some changes along the way, and they've been good changes. And again, I appreciate the work that everybody has done as we've moved down that path. I agree that we need to keep our eye on how those districts are being assessed, how they're choosing goals, when they're choosing those goals, and some flexibility, because as we found out on March 10th, sometimes life throws us a major curve. And we have to be able to be flexible, especially with our districts and our schools, to be able to say, wait a minute, maybe we need to look at this in a different way. But I do appreciate the Partnership District and that entire process, so, thank you.
Good, thank you very much. Ms. Tilly?
She's on mute.
Ms. Tilly, are you on mute?
We can't hear you.
She's trying to reconnect.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Pew, would you like to go while we wait for Ms. Tilly?
I think, she said she's on hold. Is she there? She just popped up. Is somebody not letting her in?
Mr. Flamignio, are you able to let Ms. Tilly in?
Might be calling the morning session, maybe with the morning session code. There's nobody in the lobby right now.
Okay, all right. Ms. Tilly, if you could call the afternoon code, that would be great.
Probably better text or tell her.
For those of us who are old enough to remember, this is the equivalent of watching Fuzz on the television set.
And if she doesn't let out, go, let's see. Did somebody let her know? Okay. So, I just wanted to, first of all, she said that she's trying to get the info. So I just wanted, first of all, thank, again, the process. These are, you know, it's a very tough subject. We've been in this space for over 400 years, this country, and so, while we have made huge and tremendous strides, there's a ways to go. And we know when you start getting towards the end of something, it's even that much harder to make sure that we're rolling back, disrupting, and gutting out any of the remnants of anything. And racism is something that's going to be very difficult, and something that we will all have to work towards. And I too want to thank Ms. LaHead, Cara, for your statements, and you definitely belong in this space. I will tell you, it has been hard to hold back tears, seeing the people, seeing how this has brought us all together, and seeing how people have gone out in front on this issue who never have been there before. I have friends that I see on Facebook who live all over the state, and in places that there are very few blacks or African Americans that live there, but who have been marching and protesting and raising their voice and calling out that Black Lives Matter. And Black Lives Matter is not just about a protest. Black Lives Matter is some years old, a thought. Well, it's been here forever. But the phrase, in and of itself, is newer. It's been here for some years. And it's not just about a protest, but it's just remembering and calling out and making sure that we're urgently addressing, and even more so, in this day and age, to move us out of this place of systems where racism is still able to live. I do want to just mention again, as we talk about schools and school reopening, this means something different for different communities. Some of the numbers, I just want to call out some of the numbers. For African Americans, right here in the state of Michigan, when we look at what we call the per-population rate, 12,238 per 1 million people for African Americans, and that's the COVID deaths. When you compare that to whites, it's 2,753. To American Indians, it's 2,466. And this is on Michigan Department of Health and Human Services website. So that's five times greater, that's the cases, and four times greater for the African Americans would have the, become susceptible or contract the virus than American Indians, and four times than white. And I've seen seven times greater than Hispanic Latinos. When we look at deaths, eight times greater for African Americans than our indigenous brothers and sisters, four times greater than our white families. And so, when we look at those numbers, I just want to make sure, as we're quick to return, that we have to remember, not only have some people suffered, black African Americans suffered more greatly from this illness. So, look at the mental health, the social, the emotional drain that this has caused. There are communities that have lost tremendous knowledge, who have lost people who held communities together, as well as family members. So, I just want to make sure that we're thinking about that, because I've gotten, just sitting here, over 500 or so emails, probably not exaggerating, of people who are eager to get their children back in school. And we do understand that, but we want to make sure that we do it right. We want to make sure that we are getting our children back to normalcy. We do want to make sure that parents have a safe place for their children to be as they return to work. But we have to remember that race does matter, and when we think about Black Lives Mattering, then that means that we're looking out for all of us. So I just want to raise that issue. There, I just want to also mention that during our meeting in mid-May, I asked for information on Avondale, and I'm really anxious to get that information. From what I understand, those children's learning environment has been tremendously disrupted, and so I just want to get more information on that, get more information on that. And then, I just asked that, maybe we all think about how we can collectively somehow do training for ourselves, trainings for ourselves collectively as a group, as it relates to race, and what does that mean? Because I believe, as I shared some of the other statistics with you, that shows the gulf between some populations and the black population. And knowing that, and let me just say this, when we look at our incarceration rates, because we want to, because we talk a lot about the criminal justice system, African Americans, 2.3 times more likely to be incarcerated than our indigenous brothers and sisters, 3.7 times more than Hispanic Latino population, and almost 6 times more likely to be incarcerated than our white brothers and sisters. And so, I just, you know, and I really look at the upstream factors that lead to a lot of the things that we're talking here. I'm not just talking about these things as standalone. We could, because they do disrupt family, they do disrupt community, but we also know that education is a huge factor in these outcomes. So, I really would propose that we work together to do some sort of training that helps us all to be on one accord as we talk about these issues, and we really accept how important the work that we do is to these outcomes that I speak about. So, thank you. And I think I was longer than Dr. Rice, who gave a very stellar presentation.
Dr. Pew, you may have bumped up into my timeframe. But you know, that's what passion will do, and we appreciate your words. Thank you so much. Ms. Tilly?
Thank you. I want to thank Judy for the resolution and for all of your work, and everybody that worked hard on the resolution. It's so needed, and I'm so glad that we stood up, have a state board against the injustices that are happening today. I want to mention Detroit. There were some riots that happened in Detroit, and some people might not be aware that most of that wasn't even Detroiters. The chief of police and the mayor came out and spoke up about the fact that many of the people, or most of the people, that actually got arrested were from the suburbs. They weren't in the city. And I say that because a lot of times, you know, African Americans are blamed, even when we're not... even when we're not to blame. So just want to say that. I think everybody is passionate about what's going on. And I'm glad that people are passionate. Although I do want peace, I do understand frustrations. Ms. Laheed, I want you to understand that your voice is so needed. And I'm so glad that you spoke up. A lot of people, we aren't talking nowadays about the fact, yes, it's racism going on in the police department. But a lot of it too, historically, has been in the classroom. And what teachers teach our children is so important. That's another reason why the social studies standards and accurate information, historical information, and the way you deliver it is so important. And we can turn our eyes to portage, to the schools out in portage. Because they gave an assignment recently to eighth-grade students, over 700 of them. And it was a social studies assignment on slavery. And it was about the business of slavery, how much it costs, how much it would cost in today's time. And the question was posed, do you see why the slave owners would not want to give up their slaves? That is not the way you deliver information to eighth graders about slavery. It makes it sound like it's okay. It makes it sound like they were in the right and they were not, they were in the wrong to enslave another human being for any reason. And the teachers that actually put that forth and gave that assignment out to students should be absolutely ashamed of themselves, that they did not know better and that they did not do better. Now, on a lighter note, I would like to say, because it is graduation time. I just, Sunday did a drive-by graduation for one of my neighbors. I was able to do a graduation speech that was in an event, virtual event, that was hosted by Commissioner Monique Baker McCormick. I want to say to all of the graduates out there, congratulations to all of the family members, the parents that worked hard to get their children to this point. Congratulations to you too. I know times are challenging right now. And we are all going to do our part to do the best that we can to make sure that all of your children are safe in this upcoming semester when school starts back. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tilly. Any other board members who care to share? Hearing and seeing none. Our future board meetings, no board meeting in July. Future board meetings, August 11th, September 8th, October 13th, all at 9:30. The question of virtual versus in-person is an outstanding question. Stay tuned with bated breath. We will share with you in the coming weeks. Board members, if there are any topics that you would like us to consider for future board meetings, please let Marilyn or me know. It is 2:56. Let the record show that we are adjourned 34 minutes before we anticipated. Have a wonderful day. Thank you.